Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city, uh, city council study session for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for Monday, May 5th, 2025. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We have three study items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the CU Denver class presentation. Item number two is the Ward TOD multimodal pedestrian bridge and trail project. Item number three is our potential charter amendment, city clerk, city treasurer. We will start our meeting as we usually do with our public comment. If, uh, we take public comment, when if I, when I call your name, if you would please come to the podium and introduce yourself. Tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge, what agenda item you're speaking on, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council. And we have some timing lights right here. Briefly, they're green when it's good to go, and then they turn yellow a couple of minutes later. And when it turns red, your time is over. And if you would please sit down. So, thank you very much. Our first speaker is Mike Okada, and I have a couple of folks joining us online. On deck would be Nathan Song.
Thank you, Mayor Starker, and thank you, City Council. My name is Mike Okada, and I live at 5066 Ward Road. I want to urge City Council to strongly consider staff's third recommendation on item number two, the memo concerning the pedestrian bridge and trail project at Ward Station. Staff's third recommendation would attempt to reallocate the $8.3 million grant to the Tabor Street multimodal project. In my neighborhood, the Tabor Bridge crossing is a frequent challenge for drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists alike. When pedestrians take the risk and cross the bridge, not only is the immediate danger to them apparent, but driver behavior also becomes more unpredictable. And that compounds the danger. I moved into the north I-70 neighborhood when only about 15% of the townhomes were completed, um, and before the parallel had started construction. And as the buildings were finished and the neighbors moved in, the traffic on the bridge has only increased, and the problems have become more common. For these reasons, it seems clear to me that the, that updating the Tabor Bridge over I-70 is the most worthy alternative to the pedestrian bridge and trail project at Ward Station. In the memo, staff also makes recommendations, makes recommendation number four, which mentions the Tabor Street multimodal project, but it also mentions the Ward Station mixed-use project. I want to mention that the mixed-use project is also very popular in our neighborhood, as many of us look forward to development and amenities surrounding the station. While it's certainly a shame to lose the opportunity for a city landmark, for increased accessibility, and for public art at Ward Station, staff's report is clear about the increasing price tag of the project. The report is also correct about the residents' lack of, uh, lack of value seen in the, in the, in the bridge crossing the tracks, and the businesses on the south side of the tracks would certainly enjoy the convenience of the trail and pedestrian bridge, but there is an already existing pedestrian crossing by 5075 Tabor Street on the east side of Ward Station. Lastly, I want to say thank you to the members of council and to Mr. Goff for speaking with me about these issues recently. I also want to say thank you to city staff for the thorough information on the report and for the communication and community outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker is, uh, joining us online, Nathan Song. If you would please unmute yourself. And he's not on.
They're, they're not online.
Neither of the songs are on? Okay. Then we will, uh, go to, um, Thomas Fox. I have Thomas Fox signed up to speak on an item. Mr. Fox, if you are online with us, if you would please unmute yourself.
Excuse me, Mayor. Tom Fox is online, but he also sent in a written, a public comment.
Would you like to, to can speak also? Mr. Fox, you're welcome to speak if you'd like to speak at this time. Okay. Hearing no response. We will, uh, move through our citizens' right to speak. Thank you all very much for coming to talk with us. With that, we will go to agenda item number one. This is the, um, University of Colorado Denver class presentation. So, I believe Counselor Weaver is, uh, all right?
Um, well, this is, I'm back again this year, uh, with some great projects. Um, we have been working this year with Director DeAndrea from Public Works around a couple projects. And the first will be a bus stop utilization study. Is that, is that what we called it? And, uh, some, some really neat things that we were asked to do around city bus stops that are managed by the city, not by RTD. And so, um, the, there was a lot of learning for me in that we manage, um, our bus stop assets as a city. And so, this is a project around that and a neat application for feedback. And then some other thoughts on picking up trash around Wheat Ridge. Um, the second project is around stormwater. I know something that we're all thinking about diligently, and some issues around impervious surface, um, as well as, uh, impervious surface, and then I'm, I'm forgetting the middle part of the project. Drainage, drainage in Wheat Ridge, just to give everyone an idea of where our stormwater is going. And then lastly, uh, looking at what other cities are doing, um, in comparison of, as we consider whether or not a stormwater fee is appropriate. Um, these students have worked very hard all semester, and, uh, and I'm very excited to present them. We will start with the bus stop project first. And I don't know if, um, Director DeAndrea has any other comments before we start?
Um, just, I think this was a great project to work on. So, bus stops seem a little innocuous, as does impervious surface area, but these students dug right in, and we're really excited about it. And I'm excited to see the outcomes.
Yeah. All right. With that, uh, we're pulling up the project right now. And if that first group wants to go up there, and do you have a clicker and all that? Okay, great. Excellent. And please, for all of you, please introduce who you all are before you start. And just remember to speak loudly, because we don't have any of you mic'd.
Fantastic. Hello, everyone, and welcome to our presentation on the efficient bus stop trash maintenance and feedback application in Wheat Ridge. My team and I, we're going to introduce ourselves.
Hey, everybody. Angela Gaygor. Jason Dutra.
Carrie Wellman.
And I'm Kylie Wagner. Uh, are excited to show you what we've put together for you. Our project focused on a few overall goals: trash pickup, community feedback, decreased road wear, and saving money. Maintaining bus stops, particularly concerning waste management, is crucial for public transit, but is often overlooked. Do you mind if I make some video on here?
Sure. Yeah.
Absolutely. I was trying to project. Uh, our project aims to improve trash collection and bus stop maintenance in Wheat Ridge by establishing an efficiency network for trash collection teams to use and a reporting systems, uh, reporting system for residents to use. By mapping the bus stops and designing a better route for contractors to pick up the trash, we sought to reduce unnecessary trips and city expenses. To help with this further, we developed a QR code-based online reporting team, or reporting tool, uh, to help facilitate easier public feedback. Additionally, our study revealed that heavy vehicles such as semi-trucks, RVs, and specifically trash trucks can increase damage on roads. That being said, the city, uh, the city can only regulate one of these factors, which is the frequency of residential trash truck, trash truck trips throughout the city. Therefore, our team strongly recommends that the city consider adopting a single hauler trash pickup system to decrease road wear and maintenance costs, which we'll talk about later on in the presentation. By implementing these strategies concurrently, Wheat Ridge could improve their bus stop upkeep, enhance rider experience, lower, and lower maintenance costs. One more back. There we go. All right. This first map here, uh, we created to display the locations of all the bus stops with trash cans throughout the city. You can see, uh, the Wheat Ridge city boundary in gray and the bus stops in red. Each of these stops are managed by the city in some capacity, mainly third-party contractors, but specifically not RTD. Therefore, they are the responsibility of the city to maintain. Next, I'm going to hand it to Angelo, tell him about the next.
All right. The second map displays, so in addition to the bus stops, we then moved on to, um, assets that the city manages, uh, at these bus stops. So, not, these are, um, bus stops that may or may not have trash cans, but also include, uh, benches or benches with shelters, um, that are managed by, again, third-party contractors and not RTD. The intention here was to identify assets, uh, that the city has to manage. So, considering snow removal, um, general cleaning and maintenance, graffiti removal, things like that. Um, so we haven't built out an efficiency network for this quite yet, uh, but we'll be able to do that in the future as well, uh, which I will show you next, as we did with, uh, trash cans. All right. Um, so yeah, this third map displays one way to optimize an efficient trash collection network, uh, across the city. So, this sample is modeled for 8:00 AM on a Monday, uh, and maps out the different stops and the route. Um, so we used ArcGIS Pro, uh, and the network analysis tool to do this. Um, so, and essentially, essentially, an efficiency network tries to find the best route, uh, between points, or in this case, bus stops with trash cans. Um, so factors such as weather, traffic, and active, uh, active construction, road maintenance, we're not considering this analysis. Um, instead, we should look at this as a route snapshot that considers distance between points alone. So, this simple network here starts at Youngfield and 29, and ends at Kipling and 51st, um, and then uses, um, arterial such as Wadsworth and 38. And in addition to that, the green starting points and the red finish points can be modified, um, to the contractor's desire. And next up, Jason. Thank you. So, our second goal was to implement a public feedback system that the city could use at their bus stops to help more efficiently service them. And so, we started by researching how other individual cities are maintaining their bus stops, because it is the responsibility of the city to maintain each of these bus stops. And one common theme that we saw throughout all of our research was a online feedback reporting tool. So, to begin developing our tool, we spoke with Director DeAndrea to figure out what was most important to pinpoint as far as information to collect when we started building that out. And those issues included overflowing trash cans, debris or trash within each of the bus stops, a snow removal needed, or whether bus stops or the benches were damaged. So, important information to gather from each of those data points. We then decided to build the application from there. It was a straightforward solution to the common issue of how are cities maintaining each of their bus stops? And to do this, this tool allows everybody to quickly report an issue, and it creates a live actionable report that the city can act on, and it's immediate. There's no lag between field reporting and when staff can see visibility of the issue. So, how it works is a user will then scan this QR code, and it takes them to a mobile-friendly reporting form where there's no app to download, and there's no account needed, no login needed. They're able to input the information, such as the bus stop ID. They select from a drop-down list of the issues that I just mentioned. So, there's no question as to what type of issue there is, and there's an additional section for comments if the user decides to input those. When a user hits submit, it automatically captures their location as well. So, we have additional data points to then do analysis on further down the line in GIS platforms, if that were something the city's interested in. This type of system reduces barriers to reporting while providing the city with precise structured data to act on. So, what happens when a report is submitted? Next slide, please. Once a report's submitted, it's sent to a centralized Google sheet that anyone can access, so long as you share that link with them. And like I said, this is accessed in real time. So, as soon as a user reports an issue on that form, anybody from the city that you send this link to, whether it be contractors or individuals responsible for monitoring it, they'll have access to that immediately. And it's creating an actionable record of what's happening at every bus stop in the city. Users are able to report this on a smartphone or computer, allowing them to report it and report issues as they're happening and as they see them. After submitting, a date and timestamp is recorded, and it's inserted into the Google sheet along with the bus stop ID, the issue type, the Latin long, and any comments that the user input in there. So, there's no lag. Anybody can access this at any point in time. Staff can sort and filter this sheet by date range, issue type, or bus stop ID, to help them pinpoint certain stops that are having more issues than others, to start allocating, uh, maintenance towards those, uh, stops, as well as just supporting data-driven budget decisions. This is a fully scalable system, uh, built on a free tool that uses Google. Anybody has access to it, and most people use it every day. It is a great tool that can be built on top of. So, as more data is kind of put into the system, you can start building dashboards and have reports of how many issues per week are seen, or if you're seeing a particular stop having damage to their stops. It's something that you'll be able to immediately see and access and address right away. Most importantly, this approach strengthens the partnership between writers and the city, allowing writers to feel like their voices are being heard, and the city to feel like they're acting on data-driven decisions and meeting the needs of the city, because it's exactly what they're reporting. It's making it easier for people to speak up and for the city to respond. Next, we'll talk about some cool pavement evaluation.
All right. So, now we're going to go back, uh, to talk about trash again. Um, so, um, as Jason said, we got some really cool pavement evaluation data from the city. And so, we really wanted to use that in our project, and Amanda suggested that we look at, um, pavement condition, um, of roads in Wheat Ridge and ask the question, what are the impacts of trash trucks on, uh, the infrastructure? So, before I get into the maps, I'm just going to cover a couple terms, just so we're on, on the same page. Um, so a single hauler, uh, trash collection system is when one entity, um, controls the trash collection for a city. So, that can either be the, um, city public's work department has a trash and recycling department that does all that, or they can contract out through a private company. And then a multi-hauler, um, trash collection type, which is what Wheat Ridge has, is when each resident or property owner, um, chooses the company, um, that they want to contract out with. Um, and that causes a lot more trash trucks on the road, because you have multiple different companies, um, that have trucks on the road. And then PCI, which is pavement condition index, I'll be referring to it as PCI, um, but it's basically a universal way to measure the quality of pavement. So, the values range from zero to 100. Closer to zero means, uh, worse pavement condition that needs attention. Closer to 100 means, uh, more, or, yeah, better pavement that does not need immediate attention. So, on to these maps. The map on the left shows a map of Denver and the surrounding areas. We've got Wheat Ridge circled here. Um, and this is showing, uh, if the city has either a single or multi-hauler trash collection type. As I said, Wheat Ridge in red here has a multi-hauler. So, the red is multi-hauler, green is single. And then on the right here, we have the corresponding cities and their PCI number. So, we've got Wheat Ridge again here. Um, we have a PCI of 66 we found through the data. Um, so, the values in red and orange are on the lower side, showing worse pavement condition. And then the values, or the colors, yellow and green, have higher values, showing better pavement condition. Um, so comparing these two maps, um, we wanted to see if cities with multi-hauler trash collection systems have lower PCI values, since through our preliminary research, we found that these trash trucks have a big impact on infrastructure. So, just to point out a couple areas, we have Littleton and Englewood down here with lower PCIs, and they're both, uh, multi-hauler. Um, we've got Westminster up here is also a multi-hauler and has a lower PCI value. On the flip side, we have, uh, cities like Denver and Commerce City and Thorin are all single, single hauler, and they all have, um, relatively good PCI values. So, we did find overall that, uh, cities that have the single hauler model, on average, had a better PCI value. The average for a single hauler was 74, while for a multi-hauler, the average was 60. Um, there are exceptions to this, of course, um, like Arvada here is single hauler, and they have a lower PCI. And then, on the other hand, Lakewood and Aurora are both multi-hauler. However, they have pretty good PCI values. So, it just goes to show there's lots of variables that go into pavement condition. Um, but trash, our trash collection system is one thing that we can change to help improve that. Um, so looking a bit more into Wheat Ridge specifically and its roads, we have another map here showing PCI, um, of specific road segments in Wheat Ridge. So, again, the, the green and yellow values are a better PCI, while the orange and, uh, red are a lower PCI. So, Wheat Ridge has a very wide variety of pavement conditions throughout the city. Um, some of these main roads, I believe 44th is here and 38th have, um, tend to have more yellow and green values. So, the busier roads actually tend to, um, have better pavement conditions, while areas, you know, some of the residential areas in the southern, some of the eastern areas, uh, tend to have a lower PCI score. Um, so, as I've been talking about, trash trucks have a huge impact on the degradation of roads and infrastructure. Trash trucks, um, actually, when a full can weigh almost as much as a semi-truck. So, when you have multiple companies with trucks on the road going through these, um, smaller residential areas multiple times, uh, really compounds the wear and tear, um, and can, um, cause more repairs down the line. So, optimizing trash pickup is not just about aesthetics. Um, it's also a preventative measure, like I said, um, to prevent, uh, more repairs down the line. Um, so to wrap this all up, I know we talked about a lot of different, different stuff. Um, what does this mean for Wheat Ridge? Why do we care about this? Um, so, efficient bus stop maintenance, uh, saves time and resources when we have a network that is efficient for us to service all the bus stops, uh, and not to duplicate or go over paths multiple times. That, uh, helps the city to work smarter instead of harder. Uh, and then, uh, community engagement improves responsiveness. With our QR-based application tool, residents can be part of the solution. They can feel more connected to their community, um, and that, again, helps the city be more efficient. And then fewer trash trucks on the road means longer lasting roads. Um, so, yeah, so every additional hauler in Wheat Ridge, uh, just compounds this wear and tear. But by switching to a single hauler system, um, we can help, uh, save a couple years of our pavement, um, make it last a little bit longer, save money. And all of these solutions integrated together can lead to long-term benefits for Wheat Ridge. Um, it's not just about, and we talked a lot about, you know, aesthetics and efficiency, but it's also about how we use our roads, um, how we budget our resources, and how our community engages. Um, so, yeah, thank you. I think that's all we have. We have time for questions?
Thank you. All right. We'll go into questions. Uh, Counselor Ohm.
First off, thank you for that presentation. Lot of good information there. Um, I did have one question as I started thinking about, um, you know, and I, and I really appreciate you showing where some of the outliers were. Um, but there, the one question I had was, um, in the middle of Wheat Ridge, there was that one map, and it showed, it was like, uh, the conditions of the road, different colors, and it was, uh, kind of generally red, yeah, right there. It kind of, about in the middle, there's, uh, I know it's Phil Street, a little bit, yeah, almost right there where you first hit a point, a little bit to the right. Yeah, right there, kind of a little bit south. In that area, there are no, where it's red, there's a lot of red right in the middle. Yeah, right in that area. There's no curb and gutter. And have you ever, did you ever think about like how the trash trucks impact roads that have basically no edge? So, every time they're touching that edge, they're compacting it, and, and what that would do?
Yeah, that's not something we were able to kind of dig into on our research, but, yeah, definitely an interesting question to ask. And if we had more time, I think it'd be really cool to go into more detail and look at different variables, like what you just said.
Director, Director DeAndrea, do you have a answer for that question? They, they were using our pavement, pavement data from our previous project, so they, they're not necessarily the experts on pavement, but Director DeAndrea might be able to answer.
Certainly. No, I think, uh, Councilmember Ohm, that's an excellent, uh, correlation. The, typically, the way that the roads are, were built here and anywhere really, is that without a curb and gutter, they tend to get thinner at the edges too. So, and then imagine a trash truck, depending on where a person places it, they're not going to place it out in the middle of the street so that they don't inconvenience traffic. They're going to put it out by the edge, maybe even in their driveway. So, as the garbage truck comes along, they're tend to drive along the edge of that pavement. And so, we do see that deterioration more significantly because of those two factors, the thinner pavement at the edge, as well as the garbage truck running near the edge because of the location of the cans.
And I also know that, like, in my neighborhood, I have, there's two haulers, and each hauler also has recycling. So, that's four different garbage trucks that come by every week, just for two haulers. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Holteen.
Thank you. Thank you for both your research and your, your very professional presentation. That was really informative. Um, I just, first of all, I just want to say, I love that, you know, so much of what we do in the city is we try and identify our problems, and then we trickle down to like, what are our assets or instruments that we can use to address those? And I liked how you really like centered around this asset in our community, and how do we improve that to then leverage the bigger things around like quality of life and some of the efficiencies that we care about. So, it was a little bit of a different approach to things than we normally take here, and I just really appreciated sort of that aspect. Um, I care a lot about transit working well, and I care a lot about sustainability. So, this project's like close to, close to my heart. Um, a couple of things. So, I love the QR code, and as you were presenting, I'm like, where else can we stick QR codes around the city? Um, we want to be careful with how many QR codes are out there. But the program that you're working with, would it have an option to add, uh, for people to upload a photo, um, or generate a ticket number so that internally is our city's tracking, like their response to it, they're able to, A, like, get eyes on the issue, and then also, like, generate some sort of internal tracking for, like, the specification?
As far as adding an image, it was definitely something we did consider. But Google app scripts, the JavaScript that we use to create the application, does have its limitations because it is free open source for anybody to use. So, we were limited in terms of those images. But in the future, if you want to continue building onto that code base, it is very feasible to add an ID to give them a ticket number to then be able to reference with the city.
Okay. Awesome. And then, my second, I just, I want to go off of what Councilmember Ohm just said. First of all, my neighborhood's got a lot of red in it, and we have a lot of no curb and gutter. And to, to Director, uh, DeAndrea's point, I see the garbage trucks, and they're on the edge. And not only does it erode it, but then it contributes to the, the water, um, like impacting the edge. So, it, it's like a positive feedback, like the trucks drive on the edge. We have five different trash servicers in my neighborhood. So, we have 10 trucks a week on three days of the week in my neighborhood. So, um, I really appreciate the So I really appreciate the efficiency. And then I just also want to thank you, when you were doing the routing efficiency, thank you for not routing any of the trucks through our neighborhoods and really sticking to the major, the major streets. So just a fantastic and very useful project, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a fantastic presentation. That was as, as professional and in-depth as some of the ones we get from consultants and, and people on a daily basis here. So that was fantastic. I, your, your research, your maps were fantastic. I actually had a similar question to Councilor Holtein's question, maybe, I love the, the idea of the QR code at the, at the bus stops, and, and I was also thinking that we should probably have those everywhere. But I know we have a, an app or, or something that people can report, like pavement issues and stuff like that. How, how does our app compare to that app?
That's our Viewworks program that's online. I think that can certainly be accessed too, and probably one of our next steps would be is how do we integrate that, and do we use Viewworks in lieu of? I think the interesting aspect of this is that it's so easy to pull up on your phone. So sometimes the Viewworks can be, or at least our form currently, it's a little bit long, and so this seems like there's, you know, one, two, three, quick, submit it. So we will see how we can integrate going forward after this.
That's great. So exactly, when building this application, the whole intention was to make it easier for the riders to report issues when they see them, which meant building it as mobile-friendly as possible, but also keeping it so that way, if somebody took that QR code home and wanted to report it at home, they could do that on their computer as well.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilor Weaver.
I just wanted to, I obviously have been working with this data, with them, and great job. Could you all just quickly, I can't remember the years of what multi-hauler decreases the life of pavement regardless of how it's rated? What, what was the average year?
So it, increased roadway actually decreases the life of roads by three to five years. So roads are traditionally built to last about 20 years in ideal conditions, so that compounding effect, the weathering effect, and especially from those, those trash trucks and heavy vehicles and stuff, reduces that by quite a bit. And it increases cost along the way over those years too, because you're filling potholes and you're, you know, having to address other minor, like wear along the road.
Yeah. And thank you for, the council for letting me obviously share my opinion with what I think we should do with multi-hauler versus single hauler.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real quick question here on the, the bus stop responses. A lot of the responses are just, oh, I'm sorry, a lot of the bus stops are just bus stops with a sign, so there probably wouldn't be a trash can there, but the shelters probably do. When somebody opens a QR code and wants to file a report about whatever, is, is there an identification number on that shelter, or are using GIS on their phone to get the correct location?
It's a combination right now, just because we went for simplicity, of using the community's information of the bus stops. So most people, when they ride a stop, they know which line they're on, which stop they get off, and which stops that are along their line. So we're relying a little bit on that information for the bus stop ID, but that is why we did include that lat-long capture, is to try to gather that information of where they're reporting the issue, because most of the time when they are going to be reporting it, it will be a instantaneous scan. I see the issue, report it, and it's geolocated to where they're at at that time. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Well, thank you very much, it was a great report. The only thing I, I, as I was thinking about it, if you could, if you could answer the question about where's my bus, that would really, that would really cap it off.
I'll talk very extensively.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, listen, it was a great presentation, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, this next presentation is on stormwater in Wheat Ridge. Hello. While we're getting ready, there is a packet in front of you of some of the maps that we're going to be looking at in this presentation that I turned over in front of all of your desks.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'll take a second to introduce everyone, if you want to say your names.
I'm Cliff Burt.
I'm Chantel Paulman.
And my name is Lauren Parkinson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about a topic that directly impacts this community's safety, sustainability, and future stormwater infrastructure. Now, we passed out a couple of maps that may be helpful to reference back to during our presentation, but if you haven't seen the map yet, it hasn't shown up there. Impervious surface refers to ground cover that does not allow water to penetrate easily into the ground, which means that rainwater instead runs off these surfaces, contributing to stormwater eclamation and flash flooding. Examples of impervious surface include buildings, parking lots, and driveways. Rapid urbanization has led to a significant increase in impervious surface across cities worldwide, and Wheat Ridge is no exception. The dramatic and devastating floods from the summer of 2023 highlighted the urgent need for updates to the system. It is our understanding that Wheat Ridge is considering a stormwater fee, where different kinds of properties would be assessed differently. We were asked to identify commercial and multifamily properties to assess existing stormwater infrastructure and drainage systems, and to look at how other cities have considered this issue. This project aims to evaluate existing infrastructure and to offer recommendations for how to proceed with these improvements. We have three major goals. First, to measure impervious surface coverage within commercial and multifamily parcels. Second, to assess stormwater infrastructure and drainage systems. And third, to explore the feasibility of a potential stormwater fee in a way that was fair and efficient. By addressing these concerns, the city of Wheat Ridge can take meaningful steps towards a more comprehensive stormwater management plan and ensure that the community will be more prepared for the future. So in order to map impervious surface within commercial and multifamily parcels, we first had to define what those were. Parcel data for Jefferson County does not list parcels in simple terms. The best attribute we found to describe the parcels was it's something called its statistic structure, which was defined as the type of real property. There were 65 statistic structure options, ranging from hospitals to condos to fast-food restaurants to warehouses and more. After taking stock of the options, we decided to class all, classify all parcels, either single-family, multifamily, government, commercial, or other, largely based on this statistic structure. For this project, we consider multi-part, multifamily parcels to be any parcel with more than three families, which meant that duplexes and triplexes were classified as single-family. Government properties were defined as parcels or land owned by a government entity. This was often the city of Wheat Ridge, but also included Jefferson County and the cities of Arvada, Lakewood, and Denver. Commercial properties were generally regarded as anything else, although 295 parcels were a little bit difficult to distinguish, so they were classified as other. 988 of these parcels had nothing in the statistic structure field. Instead, these were sorted by their owner listed and then individually through Google, which took a little bit of time. Ultimately, we had 1,400 commercial and 1,079 multifamily parcels when we were analyzing impervious surface. These parcels were largely clustered north or west of the interstate, or along major roads in Wheat Ridge, such as 44th Avenue, Hippeling Street, or Wadsworth Boulevard.
This slide presents our mapping of impervious surfaces within commercial and multifamily parcels in Wheat Ridge. To create this map, we utilized high-resolution aerial imagery provided by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, which gave us detailed visuals of the city. By employing remote sensing methods, an approach that involves analyzing imagery collected from aircraft or satellites, we distinguished between areas covered by pavement, buildings, and other surfaces that do not allow water to penetrate, compared to natural surfaces like grass and trees. During this process, we relied heavily on automated classification methods to rapidly identify impervious surfaces across large areas. These automated methods were essential, but not entirely flawless, occasionally misclassifying areas due to shadows cast by buildings or trees, bare soil in construction zones, and reflective surfaces such as cars. To enhance the accuracy of our classification, we integrated digitized impervious, impervious features from OpenStreetMap, a collaborative crowd-based mapping platform. This additional data significantly improved our test, our results by correcting many misclassifications from shadows and vehicles within impervious surfaces. Even with these improvements, manual corrections are still required, particularly in challenging areas such as new construction sites. Together, these targeted edits greatly enhance the overall reliability of our map. As a result, we achieved a reliability rating of approximately 84%, meaning the map accurately represents Wheat Ridge's impervious surfaces about 84% of the time. While our mapping provides valuable insights for stormwater management, we recognize that continued refinements would further improve its accuracy and effectiveness. Next slide, please. On this next slide, we display the specific square footage of impervious surfaces within each commercial and multifamily parcel. Here, darker-colored parcels represent parcels with higher square footage of impervious space. Such large commercial properties with extensive parking lots, or multifamily apartment complexes with many paved surfaces. Identifying the actual square footage of impervious surface on each parcel is important because more impervious area directly increases stormwater runoff during rainfall. As impervious areas expand, less rainwater naturally infiltrates the soil, instead quickly running off into the streets, gutters, and eventually into the stormwater infrastructure. This can, this rapid runoff can lead to flooding, water quality issues, and significant stress on existing stormwater systems. By accurately mapping and visualizing impervious coverage, city officials can better prioritize resources, identify where infrastructure improvements might be most urgently needed, and create effective policies that address stormwater challenges proactively rather
Because water naturally flows downhill due to gravity, it is important to get a general sense of the elevation and elevation variation in an area when talking about drainage systems. Elevation data was found in two grids across Wheat Ridge with an estimated 1-meter accuracy. These were then merged into one image, and an elevation grid was created from that. The city of Wheat Ridge has a variation of around 300 feet within its borders. The highest points are around 5,600 feet, and the lowest pounds, lowest, lowest points are around 5,300 feet. The highest elevation is found in the west, south, and northwest edges of the city, while the lowest points are along Clear Creek and Lena Gulch in the heart of the city, as well as in the northeast and far southeast edges of the city. While stormwater can be artificially directed through human-built designs, these man-made structures generally take advantage of elevation in naturally occurring systems. Runoff in Wheat Ridge may pass through human stormwater infrastructure, but those built systems will inevitably link up to the natural ones. With elevation previously defined, we then wanted to know where the water would naturally go first. We did a hydrological analysis in ArcGIS to determine low stretches of elevation where water would naturally acclimate. Creeks and rivers, such as Clear Creek and Lena Gulch, are components of these systems, but they are not the only moving parts. You can see the natural drainage network shown in a light blue line on the map. While all runoff in Wheat Ridge ultimately will flow to the South Platte River, there are two different ways that it gets there. The orange basins flow northeast, emptying into Clear Creek before joining the South Platte River near Commerce City. The green basins flow southeast, through Edgewater towards Sloan's Lake, before joining the South Platte River from there. Most of the areas that flow southeast are in Wheat Ridge District 1.
This slide highlights Wheat Ridge's storm sewer infrastructure. Displayed over our impervious surface mapping, Wheat Ridge has approximately 58 miles of storm sewer pipes. The pipes shown here are scaled by pipe diameter, where thicker lines represent larger pipes that handle higher volumes of stormwater. Notice how the pipe network becomes denser, and pipes are typically larger in lower-lying areas. These lower elevations naturally collect more runoff due to gravity, making these regions particularly critical for stormwater management. Areas with extensive impervious coverage often align with denser pipe networks, indicating where runoff rapidly accumulates. Having a clear visual of this infrastructure is crucial because it directly relates to city planning and budgeting decisions. For instance, identifying sections of the city where storm sewer capacity may be inadequate helps prioritize infrastructure improvements or targeted maintenance, reducing the risk of future flooding and infrastructure failures. By aligning, by aligning these infrastructure investments strategically with areas that experience significant runoff, the city can maximize the impact of every dollar spent on stormwater management. Next slide, please. With a clear understanding of Wheat Ridge's impervious surfaces and stormwater infrastructure serving them, the next logical question is how we might sustainably fund improvements and maintenance. Many cities facing similar issues have developed stormwater fee systems, specifically designed to address infrastructure needs and encourage responsible land use. Cities use different methodologies for structuring these fees. Some municipalities charge a flat fee per property, while others calculate stormwater fees based purely on the total impervious area of a property, ensuring property owners pay proportionally to the runoff their parcels generate. Hybrid approaches, combining flat fees with fees based on impervious area, or using the percentage of impervious space as a multiplier, are also practiced. These hybrid methods can potentially incentivize less impervious development and balance simplicity with fairness. Chantel will now discuss specific examples from other cities, highlighting the strengths and potential applicability of these different fee structures, and exploring which options might be best suited to address Wheat Ridge's stormwater management goals and community needs.
Thank you. We were asked to review what other cities did for their stormwater assessments. None of the cities used the same methods, and this next section will go over them. San Antonio, Texas, has a fee for all property types other than government properties. This stormwater fee is based off square feet of impervious space per parcel and by property type. For example, if the property is multifamily and has less than 2,200 square feet of impervious space, then it will cost $7.19. A commercial property with the same impervious square footage would cost $18.32. Englewood, Colorado, applies their fee to all property types. Their fee is a flat fee, so there's no need to calculate the individual cost per parcel. The fee is annually decided based on what the city needs for stormwater system investments and maintenance. Net cost is then evenly split among the property owners. Colorado Springs also applies their fee to all property types. There is a flat fee for residential properties, but the fee for all other properties is based on the number of acres of impervious space per parcel. Residential properties pay $8 per month, whereas non-residential properties pay $45 per acre per month. We in Illinois is the last location of our stormwater assessment review. Their system is a hybrid system that is made of the combination of a tier system and the amount of impervious space per parcel. The tier system is based off the percentage of parcel covered in impervious surfaces. Tier 1 is any parcel with less than 20% of the land covered in impervious surfaces. Tier 2 is any parcel with less than 40% of the land covered in impervious surfaces. The tiers go on to tier 5, with 20% increase pieces between them. The tier is then used as a multiplier to the square footage of impervious space in the parcel.
So we have looked at and measured impervious surface within commercial and multifamily parcels, looked at natural drainage systems created by the topography, and explored pipe variation in the city of Wheat Ridge. We've also explained how other cities create tier systems and assess stormwater fees within their boundaries. We would first recommend doing a more detailed analysis of impervious surface throughout the entire city. Knowing the total amount of impervious surface compared to the amount on commercial and more multifamily lots would probably be helpful in determining who would most equitably shoulder stormwater burden. We would also recommend a more in-depth hydrological study to identify bottlenecks between natural and built stormwater systems, as well as within built systems themselves. Last, if Wheat Ridge does decide to implement a stormwater fee, we would probably recommend they do some, do so in some sort of tiered system, as that did seem most equitable. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our presentation today. We'd especially like to thank Dr. Amanda Weaver and Director Maria DeAndrea for their assistance over the last few months. What I appreciated most about this project is that it wasn't theoretical, the questions tackled a real problem, and I would like to think that our research will ultimately help find real solutions. I work with stormwater data at my current job, but most of that is superficial analysis or annotations. I didn't really think about or begin to understand the complexity and magnitude of natural and built drainage systems until working with the data for this project. I've always appreciated green spaces within urban and suburban areas, but this project highlighted just how vital they are, especially as development continues and impervious service increases. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. We have time for a few questions. Are there questions out there from councilors? Okay, Mayor Protem Stites.
I actually don't have a question because that was a very thorough presentation. Again, very professional and very well done, and the research behind it, again, we, this is something we're currently about to embark on, or, you know, just a little past, but that's phenomenal, and you guys did a great job, and you almost have a great teacher, so.
Thank you.
Councilor Holtein. Councilor Holtein.
My gosh, same thing. Just kudos to you guys. Great presentation, great research. And as a map fangirl, tonight's probably one of my favorite nights of the year. You know, this is more just a comment, but to your point you just made about doing like a really like practical research project, your maps demonstrated actually two recent policy discussions we've been having. One is we've been revisiting, removing parking minimums throughout the city. And when I was looking at your maps, I was just really cognizant of how much of that impervious surface was parking, like underutilized unused parking. So I was struck that your research is really underscoring that this council is looking at removing parking minimums, which will in turn contribute to the stormwater runoff issues. So I feel like your research is underscoring some of the decisions we're making here. And then a week ago, we were in this room adopting a rezoning of Luluthrin, which was the biggest chunk of impervious surface in our city. And just when I was looking at the map and like just that big dark orange square, that the zoning that we adopted last week would like significantly change the impervious surface that currently is there. So anyway, made me feel good about the work we're doing here, and your research is really useful, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Always love seeing graphics and data and walking us through all those different aspects. This is really in a timely manner, like those member Holtein said. The one question I kind of had was typically what I see with a development is that they will have to do a detention. And so if they were, if we were to do some type of, consider some type of assessment for they have, they've done the parking lot, it's big, they've added detention to try to help mitigate that, but then we would still try to assess a fee. Did you, did you guys look at also at the impacts of bioswells?
We did not, not for this project, but I definitely understand what you're saying.
Because I think that potentially too, there might be some areas in Wheat Ridge where, you know, they, detentions take up a tremendous amount of space, and the other alternative is to go underground, which becomes really costly. And another idea I just had is if we, you know, if we were doing, if we're doing a fee for doing the parking lots, perhaps we could also consider in some areas where it's like we, they just can't do detention, could they, could they do off-site credits for bioswells? And so that the money would still kind of come in, but they would somehow, that might get factored in, you know, doing some type of off-site bioswell to help mitigate downstream.
I'm going to quick jump in, and I know Director DeAndrea is as well, on the answer that, we did not have them go into that. But something that I thought was interesting is that there are cities that both sort of penalize for imperviousness and also, what's the opposite of that?
Reward.
Reward for perviousness, which is where the bioswale would fit in, and I'll hand it over to Director DeAndrea.
Yeah, exactly. I think it's a carrot in the stick approach. So if through new development, if we were, could somehow encourage additional detention and/or water quality features that we'd somehow then reduce their fee long-term or something like that. That's definitely an aspect that we're looking into as we set the fees and go about with our rate study.
Thank you. And I think, you know, to kind of tag on to what Mayor Potemstites said is, everybody's done a really good job at the presentations. I wouldn't be asking these kinds of technical questions unless, you know, typically we'd see that with a consultant. And so you may not have the answers, but you're making me have questions, which I think is great. Good job.
I know one of the cities that we looked at did have kind of a rebate system where up to thirty percent of the fee would be refunded if they did certain stormwater things, so it's along the lines of what you were talking about.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, and compliments on this presentation here. My question is right along the lines of Councilor Ohm, and there's something for the council to consider when we start looking at these sort of things, how we differentiate the existing infrastructure, including detention ponds and some of the other solutions as well, because it simply seems like it's, it's going to be more fair to property developers and existing property owners if there is a differentiation between a development that has a detention pond and does what it's supposed to and keeps the stormwater from going into the storm sewer. So again, thank you. Very good presentation.
Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again. Great presentation, both groups. Thank you. One quick question. I appreciated the data that you provided on what some other cities are doing around this. Was there, how did you decide which cities to get the information from?
So first of all, you might have noticed that two of them were from Colorado. We wanted to make sure that there were two that were local because they have local effects, you know, weather, other things that you guys are going through. Then we also wanted to take a look at two from across different places in the country, see just, you know, what exists. And these are the two best examples that we could find, and that's how we chose.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense, and I appreciate that. Great job. Thanks again.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Thank you. Again, great job, both groups, and I'm going to give the mayor a chance to ask questions too in a moment. This project, little bit different, a lot of data to try and co-ease together, and I just, I think the groups did a great job, and I also just want to let the city of Wheat Ridge know that there are technical papers that will follow this with all of the applications and programs and sort of a data passover for the city of Wheat Ridge for all of the things that we did. So there will be reports to read as well. Those aren't due for another fifteen days, so. But I think both groups did an excellent job of doing a fifteen-minute overview of some pretty complex stuff. So again, great job, everybody, and thank you for all your hard work. And I'm going to pass it back to the mayor, and then, Mayor, if we could take five minutes to take some pictures and all those things after you've asked your questions.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to delay the photos and the funds, so I just want to thank you very much. It's a really interesting project, and there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into it. So thank you all very much. You did a great job. So, yeah, so come on up and bring your, bring your groups.
And Mayor, why don't you jump in? Well, if you want to present and then.
We got to use the president.
And then we'll take pictures.
Thank you very much. Great, great job. Thank you very much. We appreciate it all.
It's not a key video. Totally.
That's a very expensive.
Try and do that.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry you don't get.
I know. Keep asking the mayor for a badge. Maria.
You should get the picture. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, yeah. Did you say?
I don't know if it looks like a mask.
Yeah.
She's going to share it so you can watch it there.
Yeah. Oh, the clicker? I turned it off. It's on.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay. One, two, three. Okay.
Well, that maybe didn't take the wind out of our sails, but it sure took the folks out of our haul. All right. Great presentation. All right, we're going to move now on to agenda item number two. This is the Ward T O D Multimodal Pedestrian Bike and Trail Project. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, this, well, you may not know, there's been a very long history with this project. Probably started before even maybe all this whole council is on board. I don't know. And so tonight, we want to give you a little bit of history about the pedestrian bridge and trail project that we've had in visions in some planning documents from many years ago. And then Maria's going to talk about more of the act of trying to implement those plans, and then I will wrap up with some recommendations. But first, Lauren is going to kind of go back as far as 2006, I believe, and talk about how the concept of the pedestrian bridge and trail came into fruition. So Lauren.
Thank you. Yes, we're gonna, there we go. So it was back in 2006 when we first named the northwest area of the city, the northwest subarea. And the reason for doing that was actually because metropolitan voters had recently approved fast tracks, and if you wanted a seat at the table to, as a community, be a part of the planning of those transit lines, in our case, the G-line, you had to have an adopted plan. So we adopted the very first northwest subarea plan in 2006. That predates me, but we went through the process of configuring that station. That actually made a big difference. It shifted the alignment forty-five degrees so that we could have a street grid. And so in 2013, we updated the northwest subarea plan to reflect the RTD design of the Wheat Ridge Ward station. That's one of the maps that you see on the screen. And it was, the bridge actually originates, as far back as I could find, it shows up for the first time in that 2013 plan, essentially as a, as a key piece of infrastructure to connect the north and south sides of the track. So it's hard to read, but it says potential future pedestrian bridge. At that time as well, let's see if I can make this work. Yes, thank you. This is an aerial that also came out of that plan, and if you'll recall, the part of the reason the bridge, I think, got some traction in that era is because Tabor Street, as it went north, it dead-ended and turned right to Ridge. So Ridge and 50th Place did not connect, and there was no obvious way you would possibly go across the tracks at the time. So that was the Jolly Rancher factory, and there was a rail spur, BNSF rail spur that came into the factory. It's a very different landscape. So a big part of our 2013 plan was to focus on connectivity and how do you change in a largely industrial area to something that is going to be walkable and bikable and transit-oriented? So the bridge obviously was an appealing solution in that context at that time. Next slide, please. Building off of that plan and the fact that it was clear that RTD was sort of taking real steps, that the train was going to be a real thing, the commuter rail, in 2015, we hosted a technical advisory panel. That's something sponsored by the Urban Land Institute, and TAP panels are utilized when you have kind of a challenging or unique land use or development scenario. And at that time, we were unique in the RTD system in having a station go to an industrial area instead of a predominantly residential area. And that panel certainly reinforced the need for improved connectivity in the area. In 2016, you'll recall, we had the community-approved, investing for the future, our first, our two E bond, the half-cent sales tax. By then, RTD had completed most of their improvements. That's the image on the bottom left. They were actually responsible for connecting some of those missing links, so they built the Tabor, Ridge, 51st, and Taft Court connections to start our street grid. The ballot language really left the options open for the station area. The language was pretty broad, so there was a wide range of possible projects. So after two E was passed, we hired a consultant. They developed that image on the right to come up with a vision plan of sort of what could this area look like if it was more transit-oriented? And as a part of that project, the bridge was retained as kind of this iconic central feature. These lines are sort of view sheds, and it could be artistic, and it could really help connect the north and the south. And a part of their concept was, at the time, to think about acquiring those two ponds as a regional park. So the bridge would become this very important gateway between more residential uses and a sort of major amenity. Next slide, please. We worked for a while to translate this vision into a list of possible projects. So this is one of the graphics we took kind of on a roadshow throughout the city, but also to those neighborhoods that were burgeoning in the northwest. We had twelve million dollars allocated from two E to this area, which we all know is not a lot of money to spread throughout this list of projects. So we were really focusing at the time on how we could maximize the impact of our public funds to catalyze private sector investment. At the same time, that's sort of the era when Toll Brothers was coming through and Haskins Station was happening. In Hans Ranch, we had a lot of private sector pressure to develop north and south of the tracks. We were trying to evaluate kind of what, what from this possible project list might get built by a developer and what is very unlikely to fall in their purview. So 52nd, you know, ended up in our project list because of its length and the fact that no single developer would be able to manage that in the three different jurisdictions. The bridge remained on the project list because it would never have clearly fallen into one single developer's program. Next slide, please. So then in 2019, we started to do some conceptual designs for the bridge. What does this actually look like? Trying to understand what that would be. And then by 2020, we had COVID, which you'll recall put a pause on a lot of things, including the funding for any project up in this northwest subarea. And I think my last slide is just this comparison. It's hard to see all the changes, but if you squint your eyes, you can see there's plenty of them, particularly north of the track. So this is an aerial from 2012 and then from 2025, and two major things have evolved, probably many things. Maria will get in some of the weeds. From a cost standpoint, when we go back to our very original two E meeting notes, I think we thought the bridge was going to be three to four million dollars, and you saw on the memo, that is not the case, both because of the complexity of the project and the passage of time. We also thought right-of-way acquisition would be fairly minimal because of easements or land swap arrangements, and that's just really not how it's played out. From a planning standpoint, I think this has always been a good project. It may not be the right project at the right, at this moment in time, and there's a few reasons for that. Some of our land use assumptions just haven't played out the way that we thought they might. We thought there'd be a regional park, and that's not something we decided to pursue. You may recall that there was a zone change for residential development on the western of those ponds. That happened in 2020, but there's been no further entitlement or development there. And as we got a lot more residential pressure north of the tracks, we were realizing how rare and valuable our industrial zoning is south of the track. So you saw in the economic development strategy that it's really critical that we preserve that, and so we made the conscious policy decision over the last ten years to limit that residential pressure and not allow residential development in that area between the tracks and the frontage road. So as some of these land use assumptions have or have not come true, or we've sort of pivoted along the way, I think the bridge, from a land use standpoint, may not be as justified as it once was based on land uses and the costs that we're seeing. That's the Cliff Notes of a lot of public engagement and planning and variety of contracts. I'll pass it over to you, Maria, to get more in the weeds on the actual project itself.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, so this, again, just give that. Thank you. So again, this shows, next slide, please. Thank you. Oh, there's something spinning up there. Keep going if you could. There we go. Yep, so this is just, again, kind of a smaller view of, the green line shows the location of the pedestrian bridge over the tracks, and then where it would connect in the trail is the red line that traverses up from the I-70 frontage road straight and then has a little bit of a hook there at the end to connect to the end. to connect to the end of the bridge. So the length of that trail is roughly 1,100 feet, and the ped bridge itself is about 220. So that was the project. This is a rendering of that. And back in the years when, as Lauren was talking about, a lot of that was very conceptual. And over time, as we've developed the plans, we're about 90% complete right now. It really has changed and evolved for a variety of reasons, which I'll get into. But this was the original concept with a covered bridge and then an elevator on either side with a stairway as well, and then leading down to a pedestrian plaza at either end. And then, and the south side as well, having a vehicular drop-off and pickup spot. So if you did want to, were south of the tracks, you could drop somebody off or you could go into the RTD rail station area or parking lot and drop somebody off on the north side. Then, of course, we've talked about in the past with council, the public art, the Mecon, and with the flower art that was proposed to be installed here at this location. And the purpose really, as we honed in on this, was ultimately providing a safer crossing for bikes and pets across the railroad tracks. As Lauren mentioned, we improved Tabor Street, so that does exist. But this was a way that was still an, that's still an at-grade crossing. So although there's the rail arms that come down, you still have the potential, especially for pedestrians, to walk around those, get through those, and potentially either be trapped within the rail arms or still be on the tracks in some way and increase the likelihood or potential for a crash occurring there. And ultimately, to reduce that multimodal travel distance. So while you can travel to Tabor, it's out of direction in some cases for people to the south there. This is a little bit, just the highlight there shows the different parcels. Overall, we, we were dealing with all the right-of-way that we needed to acquire. There were 14 different property owners that we were working with. That includes RTD. Over the tracks, we needed a license agreement from them as well as a small portion of property to the north there from RTD. And then the other property owners are shown down below. This could be a variety of, not necessarily right-of-way per se, but easements, either temporary or permanent. And then this is at the very north end of the trail. The green here shows the location of where the actual bridge would cross the railroad tracks. This kind of odd-shaped, long triangle parcel is 5075 Tabor Street. And this, I'll jump back here, jump back to the previous slide. This does take the larger portion of their, this, a small portion of their overall lot, but it does significantly impact how they receive deliveries. So this, they store building materials on this site and sell them out of here. And the impact of this, while it seems slight from an aerial view, does significantly impact how they not only receive materials but ship them out. So this, this will become a factor as we move further along. This just shows a close-up of that. And then the multi-use trail, just a little bit closer view here, because if you read, we did receive a comment from Wheat Ridge Speaks. There we go. All of these have these, there we go. And one of the comments from the property owner that we received is, and I'll show a few pictures here in just a minute, but this is a very steep slope. So again, while the aerial looks like it's just a straight line and super easy to build, it's really not, because there's a very significant slope that we would have to cut this trail in in order to construct that. So right now, that slope comes down kind of like that. Oops. And, okay, and so we're cutting that trail in to be level, of course, so that people can traverse that. This is where the parking lot is adjacent, right down here, for the, let's just look at the name again. It was the Lakemont Property Association owns this kind of commercial lot down here, as does Foothills Housing Agency owns a piece of property down here. And what they're occurring now, and one of their comments in the Wheat Ridge Speaks, is that there's a significant amount of water that's pooling, running down the hillside and actually traversing across their property and collecting out in the right-of-way. So it comes out of, it's being actively pumped out of this manhole by, I'm assuming, the Reno Yukum ditch. And it traverses down that hillside. And actually, this is the Lakemont Property Association. You can see here how their, their parking lot is iced over. So this was, maybe we took these pictures in probably early March. But at the same time, these are all, at the same time, there's also moss growing in the, in the gutter line. So you know it's been there for a while. And this is the frontage road, which of course is out for us to maintain, where you can see the water is creating significant potholes, starting to undermine the pavement right here because it's just a continuous flow out from that property. So the Lakemont Property Association is very interested in, as we do this project, even though it's not the city's responsibility, it's the ditch, the intent would be is because we're building in the trail, that we would be able to manage this water in a different way, take it out through a system. Go backwards if you could, Ellie. I just, I want to see that graphic again, with the trail. There we go. So what we would do is actually create a drain system behind the trail and in front of it and have those collected under, in an under-drain and bring them out to one point and bring them out to the storm drain in the I-70 frontage road and remove that hazard essentially from the parking lot. So their concern is that we, even if we don't do the trail, that we address that in some fashion. And as I mentioned, this really is a ditch issue. And so if the city did not move forward, it would be on the ditch to resolve this, along with our stormwater staff to, because it is essentially an illegal discharge onto private property. Okay, so then just a couple other issues that we've encountered. Overall, as I mentioned in the, as we showed in the memo, there's an increased project cost. So just between approximately 2020, which, when we kind of re-upped the project after COVID, till now, we've increased the project up to about $19 million roughly. We've also run into some significant issues with acquisition of property. Most notably, 5075 Tabor, where again, as staff met with the property owner, it's not necessarily that they were opposed, but it did significantly impact their business to the point of we would likely need to inquire the entire parcel as opposed to just that tail end of it, which would, of course, cost even more money then. The Reno Yukum ditch also requested an easement so that they could access that series of manholes that I showed there and their siphon that's located up there. Lauren's talked about the, just the, not necessarily the lack of development, but how things have changed over time and how we're seeing less development, especially in that southern area, no longer a regional park anticipated. And then a focus more so on the Tabor Street multimodal connection. We were able to secure a tip grant for that, at least for our design and environmental analysis of about $4 million. And that is coming up here, where that, we will be able to start that project in fiscal year '26, which officially begins October 1st of 2026. Or, yeah, fiscal year '27. Oh, I'm, I'm off. No, you're right, Pat. Patrick is correct. It's fiscal year '26, which is October 1st, 2025. And then another thing that we hadn't really thought through a lot, but as we spoke longer with RTD, was the significant operation and maintenance costs associated with a pedestrian bridge. So not only do we have two elevators that are in the exterior, so exposed to all the elements, we also have just constant people through there, a potential location for loitering, other things. And so likely more need for police presence up there, as well as just daily cleaning, as well as all of that that goes along with that. So RTD would not be responsible for any of that. And so we were working closely with their staff to establish an operations and maintenance plan that they would be okay with. And then finally, just the project has taken so long. We're at that point where Dr. Cog instituted maybe three or five years ago, I would say, where they really want cities to move forward and use their federal funding. And so they do have instituted a strike system, where we've already gotten one strike on this project. If we do not, are not able to move forward and issue a bid for construction, we will get our second strike come July 1st of 2025. So we feel like we're at a crossroads where we want to either move forward with the project or look at a different way of going about it. So with that, I'll hand that over to Patrick for next steps.
Great. Thank you, Lauren and Maria. So based on what you heard, you know, as we put in the memo, I said, while the vision for pedestrian bridge has long held promise, I think a lot of the current financial logistical challenges that were just mentioned, maybe call for a pause in looking at the, the bridge. We've laid out three, no, four, I guess four, sorry, no, more than three doors. Four options, or at least items to discuss with you. First of all, to, our first recommendation is to delay this project indefinitely and return the $8.3 million tip grant to Dr. Cog. Maria did confirm with Dr. Cog that the $8.3 would be returned to the Jefferson County Transportation Group, which Maria and the mayor, you tend, don't you, think you're part of that, right?
Yeah.
So the good news is that money will come back into the pot for Jefferson County. As Maria mentioned, if we're not able to put this project out to bid by July 1st, we will receive a second strike from Dr. Cog. We may lose this funding. And there really is no feasibility at this point because of all those obstacles listed in the memo of meeting that deadline. The second recommendation that we have is to preserve opportunity for future implementation. We, we recommend that we continue acquiring the trail-related parcels, except for the one that Maria talked about at 4075 Tabor Street, which is the lumber, the storage yard for lumber and materials. That parcel would probably, or that would probably require a full take of that parcel. And we saw that the funding for that. So acquire all the, the other pieces. We've been working with those property owners for quite some time. A lot of those property owners have put time and money into it as well. Some of the property owners have donated the properties to us, so we're thankful for that. So we think it's a good idea to go ahead and finish that. I think we estimated that's just under $600,000 to, for all of those parcels. The third recommendation is to further, conduct further discussions with the Jefferson County Tip Forum Group, Forum Group, as I mentioned. As, as we said, that $8.3 million grant will be reallocated back to the Jefferson County Forum Group. First in line will be any projects that were put on the waiting list. And I don't, I think Maria and I are trying to figure out if there were any on there. We can't, I can't, we don't remember what was on there. Do you remember, Maria? Did you were able to look or?
I was able to find this. There's three.
There is three. Okay. So there's a few on there. But our recommendation is to lobby for at least a portion of the $8.3 coming back to Wheat Ridge for the Tabor Street multimodal project. And again, we, we've talked about that this evening of why we believe that project is a better priority, higher priority project today, based on what we know, based on what we know today. So the, the fourth item we'd like to discuss is some alternative projects where we can put this additional funding. So first of all, the $8.3 million grant, if we're successful in getting at least a portion of that or all of it, we would recommend that that goes to the Tabor Bridge project. But we're also, by delaying this project, we have money budgeted in our urban rental bond fund for the city's contribution to the bridge and pedestrian project. By delaying this project, we believe there's about $6 million savings in that budget. So we, there's three different projects that have come to us recently that need some additional funding, which we believe are, could be priorities for this area. The first one is a multi-use project, which with the company of Confluent is looking at. They're proposing 156 units of apartment building with 2,000 square feet retail. So they're, potentially have two, two or three different tenants up there. And I think you all know, especially District 4 Councilman Larson, the desire that we're hearing from the residents up there to have some local retail, some neighborhood retail throughout our Let's Talk programs and other community engagement programs, we've been hearing that they want somewhere to go. It's pretty exciting, actually, and as Mr. Larson mentioned, after a couple of his meetings, those folks are actually, know they live in Wheat Ridge, and I think they want to get engaged, and they're getting more engaged, and I think providing them with a place to go is an important thing. The Confluent Development has identified about $2.8 million in public improvements that would be needed to make that project feasible. So they are asking for some assistance from the city to make that happen. One recommendation is to use a portion of that $6 million to help that project. Another project that Maria identified is the Youngfield Street sidewalk on the east side of Youngfield from essentially the, the parking lot at the Greenbelt Trail all the way up to almost 44th, I think, on the east side. There's a missing gap there. That's something we've also heard through public engagement process that they would like to see a sidewalk there as well. That will help us free, it's about, I think Maria's estimated about $500,000. Otherwise, if we can't do it out of this fund, it would be in 2J, which is a very tight budget already for all the other sidewalks we want to do around the city. So this would free up about half a million that we could, we could use 2J for other projects across the city. And then, of course, which we've just talked about, the last, the final project that we think is a priority right now is the Tabor Street multimodal project. As Maria mentioned, we did get a tip grant to do the environmental and design work on that. So that will be starting soon this year. And if we could get the $8.3 from the, from the tip grant that was originally allocated for the pedestrian bridge and trail would be great. Again, we think this, this project, as you heard from one speaker this evening, for those people that live up there, they believe the trail over the interstate to the Clerk Creek trail and other areas into the city is, is a higher priority than a pedestrian bridge right now over the tracks. So with that, I think we're ready for any questions, you may have.
Okay, we'll start with the Councilor Om.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. So I'm definitely in favor of option three and four. I really do not want to give back the money. Budgeting is getting tight. I think that will look really, reflect really poorly on our city if we have to give any money back. But I'd like to keep our options open. I'd be, I have no problem with three, if that's what it was. If there is a combination of something in four or three and four, whatever we do, you know, let's, let's talk to CDOT and get support from whoever we need to, to make that go forward. I do feel that having the pedestrian bridge, my, that, that, right now, I, I don't feel that it has enough density to support the usage and that it will be used by few and not for the many. And if we were to consider doing the bridge, I wonder if we could do some type of feasibility study, meaning, you know, if we're going to pause it, you know, look back and say, okay, now, now we know. We know all the things involved in it. Is this the, is this the spot, or should that shift to the west somewhere else or east? You know, but do a feasibility, you know, spend a little bit of money, do a feasibility and, and consider that. The other thing, this is a little related to that area, but do you have any history on the lakes? Is that being constantly fed by a spring or something? What is that?
I haven't been able to look at that specifically, but we know that at least some drainage is coming down into both of those ponds.
Okay.
To some, to some extent.
The reason, the reason I ask that kind of odd question is because there's a lot that's going on. Now, we're talking about the American Hotel going away, and I see that having a catalyst effect that, you know, if the ponds are artificial and there is really just kind of some... effect that, you know, if the ponds are artificial and there is really just kind of some drainage there, would there be consideration that those might get filled in potentially? And now we're starting to create some density and now we have more of a catalyst of more opportunity. And then down the road, you could take a look at your pedestrian bridge. Because I just see that as, you know, lakes are a nice amenity, but not necessarily next to the highway. Thank you.
And they did, the property owner to, on the east side lake, they, they did fill in a portion of it over time and they were looking, they wanted to fill in more, I think. But yeah, that's, that's been discussed. Not so much on the west side. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you. Um, I kind of, I have a lot on this. So for, I'll start high level. First of all, like when you gave the date, Lauren, of when it started, I'm like, oh, this, this is my son, it's the same age as my son, who's a freshman in college. I, I'll say, like, the saddest part for me is not getting to see that piece of public art to fruition. I was really excited for that. I have, I've felt conflicted about this project. It's one I feel I inherited when I got elected. But I, I don't feel like it's the priority in the area. I really strongly believe that we need to get the Tabor Bridge. And then once that's successful, then we'll probably need to be looking at how we're better connecting. But that neighborhood, you know, even to get there by car is hard in the city because the Tabor Bridge is just like, you know, I feel like I'm in Europe. It's like one and a half lanes wide. So I, to whatever extent possible, we can reinvest the funds into that Tabor connection. You know, we, you really can't get from the Clear Creek to that portion of our community kind of can onward, but it's really janky. So, so I definitely strongly support that. I know the tip process is complicated and I just want to acknowledge with three, three projects on the waitlist, you know, we are likely relinquishing those funds. But we historically have been very competitive with attaining tip funding and I'm confident that we'll continue to be competitive as long as federal funding still allows us to, to invest in the things that we care about. So my, the one question I have is the, the continued acquisition of the, the pathway and the properties. I feel a little bit mixed about going halfway on the property, like to acquire all of those properties and then if something happens in the future and we can't get that last one, then, then do we have any alternatives that would allow us? I mean, I, with $600,000 and some of it's been donated and a lot of work's been put in, I, I'm not opposed to the $600,000 investment to continue that, but like, if we're not getting that last piece and we're not planning on it, I feel like we're putting ourselves in a position in the future where we could have a lot of properties to nowhere. So have you guys explored any alternatives that could include, I mean, like first rights, like easements? Like are there ways that could ensure that we have access to that last parcel as, as an option? We don't lose that access in the, in the future?
Yeah, I think there'd be two, two things that, you know, we could look at as the property potentially turns over. Adding a first right of refusal to the property or in putting that on somehow. Or to Councilmember Ohm's question or comment is, do we shift the bridge slightly to the west to less impact that property? So if you remember that long point, the further west we go, the less we impact their property. So would a skew be better? Would it be slightly further west? And how much effort? We have not explored that, but that may be an option is to minimize, further minimize the impact on that property. And so then the majority of the trail would still be valid at that point.
And also, I think maybe if we just did a trail, maybe it could connect eventually over to Tabor or something, not doing the bridge.
It could, correct.
People are walking down trail and they could still have a pedestrian trail, maybe.
In, in the spirit of keeping sort of, you know, like when we swap out our park funds, when we, as someone who's ridden their bike up there several times, there are still some not great connections as you come off of Taylor, Tabor into 52nd. So as we're pivoting from this being our safe bike passage, I would like us to look at, most of it's paint and some intersection work, but it's really, it's, it's not, there's, there's inconsistent bike facilities and sidewalks. So I, I would like us to maybe use some of the funding to take a look at, how do we work with our existing infrastructure to make sure? I mean, the trains move really slowly through there. I mean, really slowly. I'm not saying that there, it's not safe to cross those arms, but it's not like in some areas where the trains actually like pick up some real speed. So I, I would like us to take a look at how we could improve existing infrastructure. And there's just a couple of key points there. And otherwise, I'd support the projects listed here. Patrick, I believe you raised a question within your presentation around the city's role in addressing the ditch water issue.
Ah.
Is that really, is that something we're discussing? If the city's going to take that on or if?
I, I think we need to look at it or get with the ditch company and we need to figure it out. The, I think the, as Maria mentioned, the, so Mr. Fox and Lake, Lakemont, right?
Lakemont, yeah.
Kind of patient through this for a while and they were hoping that this trail and pedestrian bridge project was going to fix it for them now that we're delaying it. I think we still need to look at something.
Yeah, I think there's some question. I think the ditch company feels like it's groundwater, not necessarily ditch water. So I think there's some, we need to come to agreement on kind of the source of that water and then whose, whose problem is it to resolve?
Okay. So not something we're discussing tonight, it's just an awareness.
Correct. Yeah, we'll, we'll continue looking into it. And if, if we have to find funding, we will to get that fixed.
Okay. Well, sad to see the piece of art go. I'm okay seeing the ped bridge go and I'm really enthusiastic about directing more resources towards the Tabor Bridge Crossing. And, oh, one last question. So with the multi, with the mixed use project, is that, that's the kind of thing, the 2.8 million in unfunded public improvements, is that something that we traditionally use to funding for to some extent?
We do. Tip has been used to its full capacity already up there. If you remember, the Urban Authority has a loan or bonds out and so it's been allocated. So if this building does come into, if they actually build it and construct it, that value will increase, the tip will increase, which will help URA pay the bonds down quicker.
Okay.
Yep.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Cog?
Yeah, just real quick on the art piece too. We did have a discussion with our art consultant and the artist is aware and she, she recommended that we, we canceled the, I think Mr. Dolls helping us with this contract, canceled the contract with the artist, but kind of put him on hold to see if we could find another location for this piece up there or somewhere. So there's some hope that we could still have that piece up. But she didn't, we didn't, we didn't want to have the artist hanging on for nothing until we know.
Additional questions? Mr. Larson?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. This issue, it just raises so many questions that we don't have time for all of the questions tonight. But the first thing I do want to know is, when we talk about the multi-use up at Ward Station, and you mentioned 2.8 million in improvements, what would that involve?
What were those improvements? Give me a quick second. I have them right here. Those are quite a few different things. So underground detention, the connection to storm and right of way, storm mains and inlet gatherings, water mains, fire hydrants, sidewalks and landscape along south, along the regional trail, right of way landscape adjacent to Taft, sidewalk modifications along Taft. And then I think the dedication of right of way along Taft and West 52nd Avenue.
Quite a list. Are there other alternative, what, like a metro district applying something like this?
For one, one building, yeah, they, they're not in a metro district, but I don't think they contemplate creating a metro district. It's be a for rent building. So not property, you know, there won't be property tax on the users of the building.
Okay. And then the, the, obviously the Tabor Street is a scary road every time you go over that, even in a car, it's scary. The, being able to address that, do we have any idea what improvements to the overpass at Tabor Street would look like?
As Councilmember Hulteen mentioned, it's, it's quite narrow right now. So most likely it will involve widening it to accommodate bikes and peds in some fashion or potentially putting in a separate structure to, for those bike and ped facilities.
I would think that, that decision, I mean, there are obviously some other things that could happen. You could move it one direction or the other, the whole bridge, build a brand new one. The idea of a second bridge does make a lot of sense. Has there been any study on, on that question up until now?
No, there was relatively little work done to put the tip grant together several years ago. So I think the intent is, once we get the money available come October 1st, that we'd engage with a consultant to do better conceptual design and really start to investigate the feasibility of what structure works best for all modes. And whether that would involve, as you mentioned, looking at the existing condition of the existing bridge, all of that.
And what would our relationship with CDOT be on, on a project like that?
They'll have significant oversight, given that we're crossing a interstate roadway.
Okay. I could only imagine what that looks like. And then regarding the, this question about the water, every time, I've been out to that property a couple of times and every time I go there, there's water just running out into the street. And obviously that creates a hazard, especially in the wintertime. Up until now, what are, have we had discussions with the ditch company about that question about whether it's water from the ditch or whether it's groundwater? Because it seems like at this point, knowing that the water has been draining out of that thing for a long time, that somebody should have at least an idea about where that water's coming from.
Yeah, our, we want to gather some more history. I think the intent was always seen as like a temporary fix, given that this project was coming. So everybody was kind of like willing to just get, get, get on with it, you know, and, deal with it in the interim. Now, if we postpone the project, which is what I think the Property Association is concerned about, is if we forego or put it off indefinitely, that the problem exists and will become more of a permanent condition. And so we do need to engage the, all the various entities to determine, again, what's the source of the problem and how we go about solving it and then whose responsibility it is to solve.
And I would think that if, if this water is coming from the ditch, then it would be their responsibility. Our experience dealing with ditch companies hasn't been all that positive and I, I'm concerned that they might just say, well, too bad.
That's their earlier, their indication, as I understand, I have not spoken with them specifically, but is that they feel that it's coming from the adjacent properties, not necessarily from the ditch itself. So I think that's a key point that we need to figure out.
Does that ditch run 365?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the, I have to appreciate all of the, you know, the, the work that's gone into this thing. Lauren mentioned going back to 2006 and, and how, when you look at that part of the city, we had Clear Creek was just in its early stages back then. When, when we found out that the RTD was going to run a train out to Ward Road, you know, it kind of put, put a spotlight on, on Wheat Ridge. And I have to say that the city has responded very well. The, there's always the, the question of what could have been anticipated, how many of these sorts of things, like the RTD throwing one roadblock after another in front of this thing? That it just, it, it seemed like as, as time went on, it got more and more complicated and there were more and more hurdles that, just to this point, it seems like the project is, is just, the hurdles have become too big. The hurdles of the, climbing the mountain has become too high. So I, I would agree that putting this project on hold indefinitely is, is the correct way to go.
Okay. Additional discussion, questions? Councilor Snell?
Just a question, refresh my memory or tell me. Option number four, one of the, I think number, our letter B, the new sidewalk on the east side of Youngfield? Excuse me. That's currently, is that currently a part of 2J? That's listed under 2J as one of the things we'll work on for 2J?
It was originally. Yeah, we, Maria put it in in the 2J budget. Like, yeah, this would be a way to free up some 2J money and use the URA dollars. The URA dollars can only be used in this area of the city. Youngfield, I-7, so it's a project that's eligible for that funding and then, then we could do much more with 2J.
Right, right. Got it. Okay. That, then I appreciate that information. I think I would echo Councilmember Ohm's thoughts on leaning toward door three and door four. We're talking about the doors. But yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Any more discussion on this? We ready to try to get some consensus going? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So it's starting on me as we're having this conversation. Each one of the four options are standalone, right? They're, it's pausing the project, preserving the opportunity. I mean, like they're, they've.
Yeah, we could be nice, go through them one at a time maybe.
Yeah, yeah. So we could have consensus on all or none or a mix.
Yeah.
All right. Just wanted to clarify that.
Can we do that? Consensus on?
Okay. So we're, we're now then on item number one, which would be to delay the project indefinitely and return the, the grant funding to Dr. Cog. Do we have consensus to do that?
Point of clarification. Can you clarify the process of returning the funding versus advocating to try and retain some of the funding?
I think step A is that, what I've been instructed is that we would send a letter to Dr. Cog saying that we are relinquishing these funds. And then we would go back in the, which, as Patrick mentioned, would go back in the Jefferson County Forums pool, if you will, to be allocated out. There are very strict rules around how that gets allocated. So the first determination through the Jeffco Tip Forum, which is also Jeff Tag, it's the same group, is that they would go to the waiting list and they would go down the waiting list and offer each of those agencies the opportunity to use that funding. We're also now talking about fiscal year '28 funding potentially, which could get wrapped into this. So while we could, short answer is, while we could advocate for that, there is a specific project and we would need to work with our partners in, through Jeffco Tip Forum to basically reapply for those funds. And when that next call for projects comes up, which may be as soon as this summer or fall.
So would it make sense for us on question one, just to vote on the delaying the project? And then take the question, I mean, I understand that when we delay the project, we're returning.
We have no choice, really.
Yeah, we have no choice but to return it. But just for clarity of the conversation, it's a little confusing to say in one thing that we're returning it and then in another one, we're asking about conducting discussions about reallocating. So it just seems a little confusing in what we're, I'm clear, I'm just, I'm clear on it. But in our consensus, I just want to make sure everyone's clear. just, I'm clear on it, but in our consensus, I just want to make sure everyone's clear that when we delay, when we postpone the project indefinitely, we are returning the funds to Dr. Cog. Um, the only way we retain those funds is if we were to continue.
Readvocate those, or, yeah, or-
Correct.
Or advocate for them again through the process.
Right, okay.
Okay, so do we, i- is anyone in favor of delaying the project and returning the 8.3 million to the subregional council, which is really what we're talking about here? Think that's a good idea? Okay, we don't- We don't really have consensus on that, I mean-
Are we talking about item one now?
We are talking about item one. If you want to proceed with item one to give the money back.
Yep.
Can we get three votes for that, so we have sort of consensus on that? So I'm a little confused on item number two. This would be to, to, um-
Continue the purchase or, um, dedication versus getting the dedication of the, um, right-of-way needed for the-
Find the trail.
Continue that process. That's what item two is.
Okay. Item number two is to, uh, continue the process to get, to acquire the property to continue the trail. So we have consensus to do that also.
And, and if I could just make a quick comment, it just kind of bugged me that the address listed on, um, um, agenda here is incorrect.
It is incorrect, that's my fault, yeah. It should be 5075.
4075, I think, is in Clear Creek.
Oh, shit, okay.
We're close. Okay, then on item number three, this would be to, um, conduct further discussions with the, um, Jefferson County Subregional Forum to reallocate the 8.3 to the, uh, Tabor Street multimodal project. Now we have much better consensus on that. And item number four is to prioritize alternative projects with the funding saved from the delay in the project.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the word prioritize, is this prioritizing A, B, C? As in, we would use the funds for A first, then B, then C? Or saying collectively, these three projects are the prioritized bundle of projects?
Um, I, you know, it's really up to council if you want to put the money, um, towards just one, or none, or split it up. Um, my recommendation is, um, to move the Confluent project forward, which we, we, again, we've heard, um, is in high demand to have some retail space up there, that we, um, offer that project a portion of the $6 million in savings, um, and then do the sidewalk. Um, I, actually, the sidewalk is outside of the $6 million, I think Maria's already budgeted that in, um, in, in another fund, so that wouldn't be, we, we don't need to worry about that, um, and then use the rest for the Tabor project. This is what my recommendation is.
Now, would we need to go back to the subregional forum to, um, to, to reallocate that money?
No, this is URA funding, the $6 million that we're saving, um, in addition to the 8.3 that we, we hopefully could get a portion back.
Okay, so we give the 8.3 million, and we still have $6 million left over?
Yes, savings in our Urban Old Authority Bond Fund.
Okay.
That we had allocated for this project.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I've, so-
You have a question, Councilor Hulteen?
Yeah, so in response to that, um, especially if we're gonna be going back to the subregional forum, I think propose that we do Tabor Street multimodal project as our first priority in there to show that we're prioritizing our own funds also. I think that will help us show that it's a priority to us in, in our competitive application. I mean, ultimately, it looks like the funds are there, but, um, I mean, I think if, if we're gonna be going and asking for those funding back, it will help improve our application and make it more competitive if we're prioritizing it.
Mayor Proton Stites?
How much do we think that is gonna be?
A bridge over I-70?
Yeah, like more than that, right? It's gonna cost lots more.
I'm, I, if I had to pick a number, you know, it's probably in the, um, you know, 15 to 20 million dollar range.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. So I think that, I mean, it would be nice to get that money back, but I think that we need to use the $6 million directly right now. So I, I agree with Patrick, I think we need to, um, we have, I mean, we heard it tonight from, from a resident up there, um, that Confluent development, uh, and putting retail up there is also gonna get us money back at some point, so that's why I would prioritize, and then getting Young Field done, since it's kind of low-hanging fruit, something we can do. And then whatever's left, putting it towards that bridge, I think is important, but I think that, I mean, I don't want that money to sit for, for a while while we wait, because it's gonna take a while to get the designs and all that stuff, so I think we need to get started on, on using that money, uh, productively.
And even though the Confluent development there identified 2.8 million in, in public improvements, we don't necessarily need to offer them that much. Maybe we go to somewhere around 2 million, put the rest towards the Tabor then, bridge network.
I, I would think these could, could be done concurrently.
Yes, true, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
All right, do you have the information you need?
I think so, so I saw a lot of nodding on that last, okay, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Anything further on item number two?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Then we will go to agenda item number three. But, uh, we're, we're two hours in, so we're gonna take about a 10-minute break.
That's how you bang it.
All right, thank you. We continue our meeting and go to agenda item number three. This is potential charter amendments clerk and treasurer. You can turn over to our deputy city manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. And you all talked about the potential for a charter amendment back at your 2023 retreat. It was sort of a discussion that you had at the end of that retreat that this might be something you want to contemplate in terms of eliminating the elected roles of clerk and treasurer, instead leaving that work to professional staff. And I think with the very sudden and tragic pausing of our elected clerk Kirkpatrick, I believe that was the genesis for the request to bring this item before you now. And so we're here. So all I'm going to do is touch on the read, like the Cliff Notes of the memo. And so make sure we're just all on the same page to tee up your conversation. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Dahl to just go over the options for you to consider. So, um, you know, the current city clerks, the deceased city clerks' term ends in 2027, as does the current treasurer. Just as a reminder, the treasurer was actually appointed before he was elected in February of 2019 to fill Mr. Tullio's spot. And then he was elected that November, and then again in 2023. Yeah. And each of these elected officials receives compensation of $29,000 plus the option for benefits and also retirement. So that's just something for you to consider under the financial impact. And what I'll just do really briefly here is touch on the, what I, you know, the sort of the actual duties today of each position. So we, we had a discussion in the summer of 2023, which just feels like a couple of months ago in my book, about expanding staff in the city clerk's office, right? And so I'll just mention that you added a position in the 2024 budget. That's the senior deputy city clerk, who is really doing and had been since Margie, who's sitting right over there, since she started in January of 2024, has been running the day-to-day work, doing the day-to-day work of the clerk's office. She has the authority and sort of the delegate, through a delegation of authority to carry out all of those functions. So that's what's happening today. There are two authorized staff positions in the clerk's office, senior deputy city clerk and the deputy city clerk, which is vacant today, but we'll start that recruitment shortly. And the city treasurer, I imagine, and it appears that that role, and certainly Mr. Goff and Mr. Dahl could probably comment more on this, has sort of evolved over time depending on the person in that seat. Today, Mr. Miller, Treasurer Miller, really focuses very actively on our investments, which has been fantastic. I think you all know that he's done a terrific job with that. And then he really focuses on ensuring that our taxpayers have due process in a hearing. So he has delegated really everything sort of in tax and licensing to staff. The staff do that. They report up to me and ultimately the city manager. But this treasurer has said, I always want to have the first option to be the hearing officer. We actually have one coming up this week. And he can also choose to delegate that to an administrative hearing officer if he were so to choose. But generally speaking, those are the two main duties that this treasurer really is actively managing. Again, our investments, he's done a great job of managing those. He moved us over to CSIP, and then he's the hearing authority in licensing matters. I, we included some information here in your memo about how other cities do this. It's very rare to have either position elected. There's Idaho Springs, Walsenburg, Victor, are the sort of the, and then excluding the city and county of Denver that have elected clerks. And then Walsenburg and Victor, that's a dual role treasurer clerk. But they're looking at their website. It seems that the finance team does most of the work around, at least investing. I think I'll just sort of leave off there. I don't want to read this to you. You've all got a memo in front of you. I'm certainly here for any questions on the background, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Dahl to talk about options for you to consider this evening.
Sure. There's, there's sort of three groups, and let me, and they're in the memo too. But let me give you a little background or additional information for them. There's always maintain the status quo, and that's pretty straightforward. And you see the pros and cons there. It's historic practice, citizen choice. It's been embedded in charter for that amount of time. And the cons, of course, are the specialized skills. Over the years that I've been the city attorney, there have been, you know, clerks and treasurers that have had varying levels of expertise in that job and have done, you know, better or less good jobs with parts of the job. You know, in some parts of the job they really excel at, and others they don't. And that's really just a function of the fact that it's not a position that's trained for necessarily. There are, you know, there's the City Clerks Association and CML does good training and the City Clerks nationally can go to training. And all of the clerks over the years have gone to those trainings and improved their skill set considerably, I think. But the con is that you don't have that guarantee. And, and it's hard to have sort of a continuity and oversight in that position. But that's the status quo, and it has, you know, the city has survived very well with those elected positions. And I think in part because of the charter change that has those positions not supervising staff and a fair amount of those functions, as Ally has mentioned, moving over to the professional staff that have ongoing continuous expertise. Door number two is sort of the main door, I guess, if you want to do something different. And that's to run about question in the 2025 election. Under the charter, to amend the charter, you can get a petition from the citizens or you run an ordinance that just refers to ballot question. It's been done many times. You did it for the most recent charter rework. So that's easily done. And under that, that particular ballot question, it would eliminate both the clerk and the treasurer positions, and they transfer to the professionals in the office. Now, let's remember, those two terms end on, in November of 2027, right? With respect to the clerk position, it's presently vacant. What's the charter say about that? That's right here. Charter says if a vacancy occurs in the office of clerk, the treasurer, no special elections called, but that vacancy is filled by appointment by the council for the remainder of the term. And I think I've previously told you, there's no deadline around your doing that right now. Of course, the work is being done by, very capably by Margie. And so you could conceivably never fill. With the treasurer position, if it were to be eliminated, you'd have, you'd have a position not being filled until 2027. It's my advice that, that for lots of reasons, you shouldn't refer a ballot question that says, let's shorten the term of an elected official who's seated and in place now. I just, I've looked very hard at the Constitution, the statutes, to see if that's somewhere prohibited. Can the voters do that? Can they shorten the term? The Constitution statute is pretty clear about saying you can't lengthen the term, but they're silent on shortening the term, I believe, because the way to shorten an elected official's term is by recall, and the citizens have that right, right? And, and I think that that's probably right. So the structure for this second door, and that's why I'm spending a little more time on it, can be handled in the ballot question. Shall the position of, you know, city clerk, city treasurer be eliminated effective upon the election in 2027, or if the office becomes vacant at an earlier date? You know why I'm saying that? Because we have an office that's vacant at an earlier date in the form of the clerk. And I think then we'd also amend, as a part of that charter amendment, a provision that says council fills for the remainder of the term. I'd want to amend that to say council has no obligation to fill for the remainder of a term which has become vacant. And then, then you're done. You've got a transition. The clerk position would be eliminated if the voters voted for it. It'd be eliminated as the ballot question passing, if it did in November of this year. And the treasurer position would be eliminated effective 2027 unless earlier vacated. And there's a, there's a pattern for this. You might recall when we had two-year terms for everyone, and the council ran a charter amendment to go to four-year staggered terms that required some complicated language in the charter, which we got rid of just recently. It says, okay, for terms beginning on this date, here's what happens for terms beginning on that date, and on council to be able to create the transition. We'd use similar language. I don't, I'm going to wait until you give us direction before I would write that language, but that's how we would, we would navigate that, leaving us with the kind of third option, which would be to phase the positions out separately. And you can do that in a couple of ways. You could do an individual ballot question on clerk and one on treasurer. And we've had ballot questions on clerk and treasurer before that were individual and got voted down individually. You could have, you could have a ballot question that says, okay, eliminate clerk position now and eliminate the treasurer position in 2027 unless earlier vacated. That's certainly what the questions could say. You could do them all in one question. I don't see why not, and that's why you see, if you want to go there, I'm thinking one message to the voters that encompasses this issue is probably better. But you may see clerk and treasurer differently and believe that they should be portrayed to the voters as individual questions, but it might feel differently about them. And that's, you know, that's fine, too. You conceivably could wait on the treasurer question until the 2026 election. Just not do anything with treasurer until the 2026 election. That's available to you as well, since the treasurer would continue to be serving in any event, because you would not want to shorten his term. Thanks for listening to these details, and happy to answer questions with Ally.
Okay, questions?
Mayor Protem Stites. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both for looking into this. I think it's something that we had initially kind of looked at for 2026, but obviously was hastened with Clerk Kirkpatrick's passing. And I don't think this is a reflection, just for anybody who's watching at home, of either our views on Mr. Miller or Mr. Kirkpatrick or anybody like that. I think they've both done a, or had been doing a phenomenal job, and Mr. Miller's results speak for themselves, since he's done a fantastic job. What I see moving forward, though, is, especially with clerk, and you guys said it earlier, that the skill set and the minutia that goes into that position is just a lot more than a part-time elected official should be. Probably not going to step into that position, so there's a long learning curve that goes into it. And having professional staff take care of that. Also, it's always been a little weird to have somebody who's running in elections, also monitoring our elections, and has created some issues frankly in the past for candidates. And we've seen that as well as when petitions and things are passed. And I know for a lot of voters in Wheat Ridge, and I've already heard it because we've kind of had these discussions with people, they go, well, the voters then are losing some sort of a say in that. And, and, you know, to what I would say is, when somebody's accountable only to the voters, unless the voters are here watching them on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, it's very difficult to be accountable for something. We're accountable because you can see us every Monday night. We're here. We vote. Our results are in the newspaper or wherever else, and you can see that. But you don't necessarily see that on the scoreboard for clerk and treasurer. And you don't know what they're doing on a daily basis. And some of the reason that we've shifted some of those responsibilities of supervising staff is because it's very difficult to have a full-time staff monitored by a part-time boss. So for all those reasons, I think it would be better for the citizens of Wheat Ridge if we had professional staff filling those roles. So the way they do it, I think Mr. Dahl did a fantastic job with option number two here that allows us not to need to reappoint and spend that money now for the clerk position. And then for the treasurer position, it allows Mr. Miller to finish his term if he chooses so, or if he chooses to not do that. We don't need to fill that position with somebody who may or may not be qualified because back in February of 2019, the other person that was up for that job was me. And, and, you know, if, and Chris's presentation was phenomenal that night. But, you know, that was council appointing. If it had been an election, you know, things might have been a little bit different. And I don't think that we want something as important as our city finances going to maybe somebody who's the most popular person or somebody who's a better campaigner. I think we want to go into the most qualified person. And we might find more qualified people who don't live within the bounds of the city of Wheat Ridge, and that gives us more options. We don't, we don't appoint our judge and force them to be somebody who lives here. So I think that that's something we should continue to look at. So option number two is the way I would go. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the report. Really a lot of detail in there, and I had some questions that were, that were actually answered. I wanted to make sure that I have a lot of respect for Steve and Chris, and I want to make sure that, you know, that this seems like, would this be a good fit? And to keep it short, I'm in favor of option two.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
I will keep it short. I'm also in favor of two, for many of the same reasons that council member states or Mayor Protem Stites said. Could have been, could have been treasurer's state. We are incredibly fortunate. Chris Miller is just a gem. And we're really benefiting, the entire city's benefited from his service. And he, I believe, is not eligible to run again. And, you know, we're fortunate while I've been here that we've, we've had good representation in these offices. However, you know, it's not hard to imagine that, you know, the most popular person could win without the type of confidence that are increasingly complicated. You know, financial situation increasing, I really feel like the increased need for trust in our elections and our civic processes needs to be transparent and elect, you know, elected people, it's politicized, even if they're popularly elected. So I, and I prefer that we just do them both at once instead of titrate them out. We will have plenty of things to ask our voters in the next couple of years. So I support putting both of these on the ballot, and I'm just, we're fortunate that we've had good people lately, but we have even better staff. So I appreciate the quality of staff that we have that is working in these roles. So I'm happy to refer it to the ballot, and I'm also, you mentioned this in the memo, but, you know, part of this will be our outreach to the community to educate them on this. So during the break, some of the council members were just, you know, comparing their schedules for their upcoming district meetings. So summertime is a great time to engage our community around what these roles have been and the benefits of turning them over to qualified staff in our city. Thank you.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. On that note, talking about the public education effort, does that look similar to, say, well, can you talk just a little bit about what that could look like? Because I do, I do feel like there's different levels of understanding just in our community of what those two roles do. So could you just talk about what we might do for those, for that education piece?
Q, I can start. Take a little step. I mean, obviously, we're very careful in that we educate on any ballot question. We just provide, from the city perspective, we provide information. And so I think we would, I think, invite the public into, you know, understanding exactly how these offices run. I could totally see putting Margie out on the road and having lunch and learns, lunch and learns with Margie, you know. But yeah, I think really, you know, talking, I mean, these are, you know, clerk more so, but, you know, typically very behind-the-scenes, you know, offices. So really, I think we would go out there with job descriptions and talking about, you know, here's what we, here's what happens, here's what staff does today. You know, something that, just sort of like, you know, something that we, the city manager and I have been chatting about is, you know, is making sure that we continue the great work of the investment work that Treasurer Miller's been doing, whether that's through a consultant or, I'll say it, him as a consultant. You know, I think these are, these are all really good options. But I think we would talk about that and celebrate that work and really talk about how Wheat Ridge is very unique in this space, how these are very important functions. I would say particularly, particularly the clerk where, you know, you can see in the chart I included in the memo, the majority of, well, all cities, all home rule municipalities, the duties, there's not even necessarily a staff treasurer. The duties are sort of folded into several positions. You know, the CFO might focus broadly on investments with the city manager, but another staff person might be more responsible for licensing matters and due process, right? But the clerk, there's always a clerk. There's always a clerk. And we're just very unique that ours is currently not required to be professional staff. So I think we would, you know, put together some pretty good, really good education, again, inviting the public into learning about exactly what these roles do. You know, I kind of envision almost like a mini Wheat Ridge 101, perhaps. But it is an important question, and I think as long as we're just providing good educational information to help people make the right decision for them, for Wheat Ridge. But yeah, I think that's how we would go about it.
And if you do decide to move forward and refer this to ballot, you know, you staff in the city cannot spend any time or resources or money on campaigning for or against it. You could, as individuals, as council members, and a citizen group could form some type of issues committee that shows, choose, so choose to do, to support it or to not support it, I guess. So, but that, you know, timeline for this, if you decide, again, decide to move forward, would be, you would have to make decisions, set the ballot question by the end of August to get the questions to the county. So after that point, again, staff in the city cannot spend resources on. You know, we got to be careful with even educating, because we don't want to make we got to be careful with even educating, because it, we don't want to make sure, we don't want to make sure we're not crossing the line. But so, but I think what Ally said was was good.
Yep.
And you can do all of that before the ballot question is finalized and set. You know, that's when the curtain comes down and and that curtain's well-recognized. But you'd want to make sure it's, it's, you respect the curtain.
Got it. And thank you for that, and that all makes perfect sense. I I ask that partly because I'm very aware of all of the things that staff are doing now and doing at such a high level. And it's, you know, it's another thing that would be necessary, and so making sure that, you know, how many plates can you spin? You know, and and just making sure that that is doable, but obviously, that's what would need to happen. I'm totally in favor of option number two as well, and I just appreciate the the thought behind all of that and the efforts that will be, that will, that will go toward that. It makes, it makes sense, and I'm, I'm a big fan of the Margie Road show. Hey, done deal.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, excuse me, for the benefits of the folks watching at home, I'd like just, if we can quickly walk through how the roles, the duties and responsibilities that the elected officials hold now, how that would be folded in. The treasurer seems pretty straightforward, but help me understand how the role, the responsibilities that the clerk has now would be, where would that sit in the city's organization? If you look at the D O R chart, where would those roles land?
Thank you, Counselor Larson. So today, Margie is is doing everything on the list that you see in the memo on page two. And she, she currently reports to me, and I report to the city manager. I think our vision would be that that would, essentially, her role would become the clerk. It would not be an additional position. But instead of a senior deputy city clerk, we would have a city clerk and a deputy city clerk. And unless the city manager were to choose to do something differently.
No, it's been working. As as you all know, you were kind enough to give us the position of a senior deputy city clerk, and thankfully, unfortunately, with Steve's passing, it was, it's a good thing we had the position in place. And it's been working well. And so as Ally said, we don't anticipate there would be an increase in staffing with that transition.
That was my next question. Additional FTEs for for this? So there'd be no additional?
I don't think, I don't think so. I think with, yeah, I think if anything, like I mentioned earlier, we may perhaps want to have someone consult with us on investments, although Treasurer Miller has actually has a setup with an advisor with CSIP. So I think we would need to look and assess whether or not there's a gap there. And it could, it's, based on his results, well worth it to to invest in that, and that's something we can all talk about and decide if that's worth it or not. But I don't think we see the the finance staff today, the finance staff are doing, the duties as outlined in the code.
Right. And and then finally, on elections, and is there a, the person responsible for administering the elections, does that need to be like certified, or is there some licensing involved or something like that in order to be the person that says, I approve these elections?
Not particularly. The statutes sort of take over, and the statutes say the city clerk is the designated election official. And and that's true in every city, whether you've got an elected clerk or an appointed clerk, or a clerk that's appointed by the manager, which I think would be where we'd end up. We'd have the manager appointed. Number two was proposed and passed. The manager would be appointing the clerk, just like the manager appoints the the department directors, so that you would actually have the title, because you need that title in so many ways, on documents, and pertinent to your question, city clerks throughout the state are the designated election officials, and they, but they, they, they take care of that function. I'm trying to think of the right way to say it, but they take care of that function in a number of ways. There are clerks that are really pretty competent in that arena, and we've had good clerks here that have done that over the years. Often, they'll, they'll hire some assistants for a particular election. There are consultants out there that help kind of back you up in a, in a tricky election, or they just rely on their interior and internal staff. So one way or another, that that's something that is handled throughout the state with no trouble at all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions? I'm going to go out on a limb here and see if we have a consensus to move forward with number two. Seems like we do.
Thank you. Very helpful. Get busy not only on language, but on the messaging package.
Okay. Any further instructions on number three?
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go to, I think, city officials matter, or city managers' matters?
Just real quickly, I'm right by the film of thunder, but Mayor Protem and Councilmember, Councilmember Larson and the mayor, enjoy, can't speak tonight. Join me today, we had a groundbreaking with Google Fiber. Google Fiber is in Wheat Ridge. They started back in April. They are hoping to be completed with the entire city by probably the end of next year, the first of 2027. So and then, as they roll through the city, people could start signing up. There is a website, and we'll get out to the public, and you can check to see if your address is available, to be hooked up or not. And so the whole city doesn't have to be fibered before individuals can sign up. So excited that we have another option for our residents. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We'll go to elected officials' reports. If you have a report, raise your hand. Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And last week was another busy week. As the school season kind of winds up, on Tuesday, the 29th of April, I attended at Arvada West High School, the annual, 24th Annual Recognition Ceremony for ARSE, and that stands for the Arvada Wheat Ridge Service Ambassadors for Youth. This is a group that is largely supported by cities, the Rotary, the Optimist Club, Kiwanis, and whatnot. And there were more than 100 students that were recognized. Twenty of the students got scholarships to attend Red Rocks College, and then 90 students were recognized and provided with a stipend for, this is acknowledgement of of the fact that they've overcome some major life obstacles, and it was a tremendous ceremony. And then on on Thursday, and I don't want to take anybody's thunder here, but I was able to join the Wheat Ridge High School capstone event, where groups of people, three or four people, got to look at the presentations for seniors at Wheat Ridge High School and some of the things they've been working on, and and just, it was so impressive. The the five students that came through there, one of them talked about how 3D printing is going to change manufacturing around the world, which I I thought was great. Another one about how schools can manage social media used by their students. And then finally, the opportunities available for young people in the building trades was very impressive. So every one of those students came in, they were enthusiastic, they were very polished, and they had, obviously, were very proud of the the capstone project that they put together. And I was very proud of being able to to join in.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really brief, two things. This past Saturday, I attended Edgewater Pride's kickoff party. It was at 40 West Arts. And that, really, that that group and that movement has grown so much, it's it's Edgewater-centered, but it is very much Jeff Co. representative. And it was a great event. It was a great celebration. A lot of funds were raised for two statewide organizations assisting with LGBTQ plus youth and assisting and supporting them. And so basically, that was, it was just, it was a a great event and kickoff to celebrating Pride in June. So kudos to everyone at Edgewater Pride and and everyone from Lakewood and Golden and surrounding areas and and Wheat Ridge, obviously, for participating and being a part of that. And then the second thing, I just had some conversations with neighbors over the last couple of days. Everybody has got weeds in their, on their mind, because weeds are growing, just like grass is growing at spring. So I would just like to remind everyone to please explore alternatives to using Roundup. I know weeds are pain. We all get them, but Roundup is no good. So please explore other options. My wife, who is a master gardener, is a big fan of agricultural vinegar. Our yard always smells like pickles.
I didn't say yes to that.
There you go. So committee could help out with that, too, just reach out. But that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional reports? I had just, I had just a couple of things going on. We had, it was really an honor to join Denver Community Acupuncture for Ribbon Cutting at 4251 Kipling Street, great in in our, sort of what I call our, one of our high-rise buildings in Wheat Ridge, down down by Kipling and and 41st, 42nd. But a great, a great new group there that's moved over from from Denver. Have a, it always impresses me, because Wheat Ridge is really a home of the healing arts. And, you know, we have a world-class hospital, but, and it filters down from there with a lot of great, great healers in our, in our community. So they're doing great work there. Great to join Google Fiber this morning, and that that will will really provide some enhancements for our community. Was really happy to, to, last night, to go over to the historical park, the history park at 40, 42nd or so and Rob Street, 46th and Rob, and had a real nice potluck dinner there and talked to the artist who's, who's painting a mural on the, on the old post office. So a lot of energy in that, in that community, and it was great to, great to share a meal with them. And let's see, next Saturday, and I apologize in our mayor's matters, we had an incorrect date for the coffee with the mayor, but it's going to be next Saturday on the 10th of May from 9:00 to 10:00 at Vanola's Italian Market. And if you are able to join us, we'd love to have you come and have a coffee and and talk about what's going on in our city. So if there's any other, no other news or or work to be done at this meeting, we will stand adjourned, and we have a study session with several public hearings one week from tonight. Regular, regular meeting. Yep, regular meeting at 6:30 next, next Monday night on the 12th. So travel safely and slowly through our city and get home safely, and we all thank you very much.